I.
Let us allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna sing one day.
We have no microphones.
Nope, we have, we're working off general mic tonight.
So we'll have to project.
Yes.
Yeah. Alright. We're gonna start off with superintendent.
Yes, and so we have our architects, BCK, and Ed, would you go ahead and introduce yourselves and get started?
My name is Ed Bernhauer, and I am the project architect for the Stellamaris renovation project for the district.
I'm Bill Sands, I'm associate with the BCK IDI group, and I am the project manager for the Stellamaris project.
And I, um, they're actually gonna come and do a full-blown presentation for us on the 19th, but they're meeting with our facilities group tomorrow, and they are going to be going through, and I have it, I mean, they're doing preliminary initial design phase update. And so I thought this would be a wonderful opportunity for the Board of Education to just be what we call taking a book walk through, you know, in elementary school when they take you through the book before they actually read the book, so we're gonna walk you through what the education facilities is gonna be looking at, and so that you have a chance as a Board of Education to take a book walk through tonight and to be able to do your research. We'll also have this, for those of you who are more green, you can look at this electronically, so that when they come on the 19th, you really have a robust understanding of what you're looking at. Remember, this is very initial. What they're, what the architects will be talking about tonight is very much about what the structure, what their findings were about the structure, what the preliminary information they were given about like daycare, pre-K, what initially the big rocks were. So I'm going to stop talking once you start talking.
Absolutely.
I get really excited about it.
That was a perfect intro, though. Um, yes, and really, that's all embodied in this green booklet, which is actually our schematic design report. Now, as many of you know, you've been through Capitol projects, you know what the schematic design process is, the design development process. But for those of you who may not know, it's actually really where we try to get all of the information together, as Mrs. Graves said, from the district. That's the schematic design, gathering the information for the project that's necessary to meet your needs for the design. The second part, which is actually the phase that we're in right now, which is design development, is where we figure out your problems, and we figure out how the building's going to come together and how it's going to actually become the early education center for you, for Stellamaris. The next phase, construction documents, is where we take all of that information and figure out how to inform the contractor as to how to construct that project. So really, that's kind of in a nutshell how those three phases work, and we're happy to report to you tonight as an update that we're right on schedule with our first milestone, which was completing the schematic design report. And so that's what you see in front of you. Unfortunately, the bad news is it is your homework. So we will be back again to present our status of the design development to you on June 19th. So at that time, really is the last time that you would have an opportunity to contribute thoughts or comments or ask questions about what's contained in the schematic design portion. Because of, again, as we reviewed at the very beginning of the project kickoff, this is an aggressive schedule for the project, and so we're trying to really stay on top of that, and we realize it's not a lot of time. But hopefully, over the next couple of weeks, you will have time to kind of go through this information, take a look at it, ask any questions. Mrs. Graves and Mrs. Buscemi know how to get in contact with our design team, and so that we're all on the same page as we move forward. It's really our foundation stone for where the project is going and developing. So tonight, I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question about that process.
Yes.
So, thank you for giving us this overview, because just the timeline and the process is really helpful, so thank you. So on June 19th, you're presenting it to the board, the design.
Yes.
And it's put up or shut up time, like after that it gets locked, is that what you mean?
No, in fact, that's when, the June 19th milestone is when our design team completes kind of baking the pie for you, so to speak, and we deliver it to you for your commentary period. The next milestone is when we need your comments back from that phase.
Okay.
So June 19th is when the first time you'll see the schematic.
Right.
Or, excuse me, the design development piece, and that's when your commentary begins on that portion. It is the closing book for commenting on the schematic information. So as a difference, you know, really, by that June 19th, we need to make sure that we have the program nailed. And when I talk about the program, what I'm referring to is what the district is planning on having at the building and using the building for. That needs to be finalized by June 19th. How it looks, you know, the materials, the colors, things like that, that's what we move on to in the next phase.
It's the purpose of the use of the space, has to be nailed by that.
Yes, exactly.
So then my question relates back for our superintendent is, so at that point when they come in and tell us, will the, will you and/or your cabinet be talking about the vision you have, that's what you want to use it for, and therefore, it's getting confirmed through the architects? Because you guys are, because you as a team would be big drivers of that now?
Well, that's, we've already been, we've already been meeting with them.
Okay.
On the, on the big rocks, which is the pre-K, it's the daycare, it's the early intervention, it's a commercial kitchen, it's a large instructional space, those were the big rocks that we shared.
That's all locked.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll be heading towards it, and also the handicapped access, maybe to New York State standards, which was probably the biggest rock of all, which is the elevator and the handicaps.
Yeah, in addition to some other elements as well, yeah. And, yeah, actually, in concert, at the exact same time that you'll be reviewing this, this is made available to all the stakeholders that we met with, and also tomorrow night we're presenting to the Educational Facilities Planning Committee, and they'll also receive copies of this. So it's actually a number of stakeholder groups that we're working with simultaneously, and all of that information and their comments, as you said, is due June 19th. That's the finalization of that.
Go ahead.
Ed, tell me, the, on the timeline, it says in the second or third week in August, we would have 100% submission, review, and sign off.
Yes.
That's when, if we say the wall's purple, it stays purple?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. What isn't on this list, and I'm probably, I'm not remembering this, when we talked about the gym, did we say we were not gonna factor the gym in at all on this?
Actually.
That was a component that was sold, that we needed another gym.
Yeah, so, because we did, we did pitch that it was gonna be another gym, there was discussion about high school sports being played there, practice and sports, so, and it's not on this list, so I, you know, I'm pressure testing this here.
I, I thought, I thought, our Eric said that there was no plan to do high school sports there.
He does not want to have, he feels like he has ample basketball space, he would like space for things like cheerleading, he would, he feels like it's those extra things, like the little guy stuff, that, so that he can capture space, he has a pretty clear viewpoint, but he doesn't want.
Yeah, actually, you'll find in this packet are the meeting minutes with Eric Bramhoff, where we went over that.
Right, I think the point wasn't about what Eric said, it was about when we had, and I think some of these meetings were videotaped, it came up when we had the forum in the elementary school, and if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
That there was public discussion and confirmation that that gym would be functioning for high school and middle school sports. So I bring it up because that's what the tax, was communicated to the taxpayers before they voted and approved this.
Yep.
Secondly, I'm on the athletic committee, and we're talking about adding more in gym sports next year, like a middle school volleyball, JV volley, boys volleyball, so the demand's gonna go up, so I'm just, I'm raising concern, I have two concerns about this. One, that it was communicated to the public before they voted, that this was gonna be part of the plan, delivered, and two, that our needs for those gyms are flexible and change, and so for us to go into entering into a program, not acknowledging that the demand may change and trying to anticipate and incorporate is a second concern.
So, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, actually, that's something to, it's a very good point to make in this schematic design report. This is all seen through the lens of the early education center as a education center, and so that's why that wasn't included as a program element that the daycare stipulated that they needed, or that the preschool stipulated that was a make it or break it piece. However, because of how the building works, with code, with mechanical systems, plumbing systems, we've included it, because there's no way to separate it, it's one building. So just to alleviate some of your concern, we've actually evaluated it as part of our code review, as part of our existing building condition summary, as part of our fieldwork. What's going to be difficult, and actually, to kind of prepare you, we're jumping ahead a little bit, but at our June 19th design development meeting, we will have an itemized cost estimate for the opinion of probable cost for the work. As we see it now, the entire project, including the gym, is above the budget that is set aside for the construction. So decisions will have to be made as to which components are included and which aren't not.
Well, that's a problem, if that's what we communicated to the public that was gonna be incorporated in this. And secondly, at that public meeting, we also did talk about that this was the use for now, but how important it was to create an environment that afforded flexibility, because our programming needs may be different in five or 10 years.
Right.
So that it shouldn't be built just through the lens of a specific program, but should be able to accommodate that program. Those are two, that's two different orientations, so, you know, I'm really hopeful that we are approaching it in the way that we did communicate to the public, which was long-term creating a facility that allowed flexibility.
Right, why don't, can we back up a little bit and have him bookwalk us through first?
Sure.
I think, because there, I think there's flexibility within the program to, when those, we're talking the big rocks that we talked about, and you're talking about another, what you're saying is another big rock.
Well, it was a rock we communicated to the public, right.
Chris, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm sorry, can I, I don't believe that we specifically said that the gym was earmarked for middle and high school sports. What we did say is it would give us another practice venue to use, because gym space is valuable in our district. I believe then we subsequently uncovered a flooring problem.
Well, we knew about it, but the board didn't know, but there were those that did know about it, but it was just never communicated effectively to the public or.
Well, I, we learned about it in a board meeting.
Right.
That there was a issue with the material in the floor. But if we go back, and we will, to exactly what was voted on and approved, we did not specifically say that it would be accessible to middle and high school sports. We said it would give us another gym to practice in.
The only teams that we have practices for as a district are middle and high school teams. We don't have practices for, for anybody else.
But.
But anyway, you know, we don't, you know.
Cheerleading might end up in.
I'd love to hear the rest of the presentation.
Yeah, so as we go through the book, you'll see the first summary has just a project synopsis and the schedule that you were referring to, the milestone schedule. And the point I'd just like to make tonight, as we said, we hit our milestone, our first major milestone date, so we're on schedule so far, which is good. Our second section is all of the information our team collected on the existing conditions of the building. I'm not gonna go through all of the pieces, because it's quite extensive, but one of the things to be aware of is there are certain pieces here that dovetail into fitting with programmatic elements and why we're renovating certain areas because of deterioration and problems that we found. Another thing on the existing condition side, as Mrs. Graves said, is the lack of handicap accessibility that needs to be addressed, certain hazardous materials that need to be removed from the building, in addition to other fire codes that are not currently compliant, that we have to now, since we're renovating the building, make compliant for the space.
Can I ask a quick question about the hazardous materials, because I saw that in here in terms of the testing required?
Yes.
And I just, Katie, didn't we, wasn't there extensive testing that was conducted when we were doing the close?
Yeah.
I thought it was done twice.
Yeah, we tested the urine, but whenever you, whenever you take walls out and you take things out, you're gonna, you're gonna have, you're gonna have others.
I thought we did more than test the walls, there was that issue with the flooding, I thought we were testing flooring, I mean, we.
You're right, we talked about that.
Yeah, the extensive testing that was done was actually mold testing, the entire building was done for that, and also air quality testing.
Okay, but I, at least, well, maybe these were in private sessions, but we talked about testing flooring and materials, because we were well aware of when the building was built, and the risk of asbestos and other materials.
And, Susan, yeah, we did, and we paid extra for a double.
Right.
Inspection, and I believe.
But that was just air quality.
It was air quality and mold, that was a concern, because the toilet, I believe, overflowed, because nobody was in there, and we had to open up the wall.
Yep.
And we were scared about mold, so.
That wasn't my, I thought we were testing more than that, that was my understanding.
It was mine, too.
J.C. Brown did test for some limited asbestos testing during the secret review that they did when we first were thinking about purchasing the building, so they've been in there twice, and now they'll be in there a third time.
So in terms of the testing, or what you uncovered, and I, this report so far is fabulous, and I love the pictures, and I think, you know, the presentation's great, is there more damage than what was initially anticipated, and if so, what do you estimate the cost is gonna be to address? I mean, it's a.
No, actually, fortunately, as far as water damage from the flooding, there is no damage.
Okay.
Really, it's materials that the building was constructed with in 1964 that are not allowed to be in the spaces now because of current codes.
Right.
So it has nothing to do with the flooding or mold or things like that, it's really just building materials that can no longer be in those spaces or used on children.
But we would've known that anyway, because we know when the building was built, so that wouldn't be a surprise.
Right.
Right, that's not a surprise. It's, and we didn't find anything that was out of place, or like a toxin or something that was a surprise to us, it's all normal materials that were used at that time, it's just, they can't be there now.
Right, we understand that, it's just in previous meetings, we, you know, it was my distinct understanding that we were testing for those materials as well, just, I mean, I thought.
Everything, we, Jennifer.
Because we knew, we knew asbestos was gonna be in there.
They came in, and they tested for, they tested the air quality for any kind of asbestos that could've gone airborne, for any mold that could've gone airborne, for anything that would've, just could, could've been an impact from the flooding that took place, and they, they didn't, nothing came back, we were safe. But when, when you start doing construction, and you start taking things apart, that's what we're trying, this is.
But you also have a contingency budget for that kind of stuff.
This is, it's part of the, it's part of.
Actually, it's built right into the construction cost.
Yeah, so that, that wouldn't cause us to go over budget.
Yeah.
Right, correct, yeah, that was anticipated, yeah.
Right, okay.
And even in, as you'll see in the appendix, we also have the original building condition survey that stipulates some of that as well, so.
I mean, when we did the current building project that we're finishing up, that, we found the same thing.
Did you find anything good in the building?
Yes.
You know, buried gold or treasures or?
No, we didn't find any treasure.
A statue from San Diego.
We did find, we did find a fantastic exterior envelope that really is a very good basis, a steel superstructure, which is fantastic, because getting to, back to flexibility, the interior walls are all non-load bearing, they're all just partitions.
Right, which is fabulous.
Which means we can really reconfigure the space to what we need it to be, I'm trying to think, all of the egress stairs meet current egress and fire requirements.
But that's not fun stuff, you didn't find any.
The windows, no, we didn't find any.
I get a word, did you find, uh, the.
Definitely. Actually, another part of the existing conditions on the good note is, the windows are in very good condition and can be extremely expensive to replace, but since they were in good condition, we are recommending keeping them.
Okay.
Also, too, they are actually larger than what we typically find for the age that they were put in, which is great, because it allows for all of the daylight that the state requires, and even more so, we're above that, which is a very sustainable idea in educational environments, so we have more daylight coming into the classrooms than is typical, which is fantastic.
That's great.
So, so those were some good parts of the existing building that we did find, so. But then our next section, which I think is important for you all to be familiar with, is we actually, the last time we were here, met with a whole series of stakeholders that would be involved in the programs in these spaces. So you'll see, here are all the meeting minutes with those groups, such as the Technology and Security Group, the Daycare Group, pre-kindergarten groups. We also met with the Educational Facilities Planning Committee and discussed their thoughts on the project, and we were able to meet with the middle school and high school administrators, and also the athletics and facilities administrator, Eric Bramhoff, just to get their ideas as well of, alright, again, keynoting on that flexibility, what else can this building be used for other than just daycare and pre-kindergarten services? So these are all the meeting minutes that are summarized here in the report. Then the next piece is the code analysis, which is section, I believe, section five. For the code analysis, this is really what's required for doing this project, and it's really important to remember, there's really primarily three main pieces that we're looking at. One is New York State's building code, and really, when we talk about it, it's the existing building code, since the building is currently existing, we're not building a brand-new building from the foundation up, and that in turn actually references the actual building code of New York State. We're using the 2015 version, which is the current code, so that's why there are a number of upgrades and things that we have to do, because it's current code now, and it wasn't obviously in place in 1964. The last piece is New York State's Educational Department manual of planning mandates. This is required because it is part, the pre-kindergarten is part of the program at this facility, and for those spaces that the district is involved in, their mandates and their regulations will also have to be met. Now, as you go through, there's a number of things that we found in the code review that is fairly straightforward. One of the things that we do need to accommodate is the accessibility that everyone knows about, and on a number of different levels throughout the building. The other thing that is sort of one of the larger rocks, as Mrs. Graves said, is we did find that the basement level to be occupied under current code does need to be sprinklered, and would have to have a sprinkler system for that level.
But we, that was built into our plan, wasn't it?
That was not in the existing building conditions survey that we were given, that was done by a previous vendor, but we feel it can actually fit into the scope of what we're doing, because of the amounts they had in there, too, for plumbing systems and things as such, but.
So we have the money on current budget.
It is something, we didn't, we didn't actually see that written before in the scope, but in our code analysis, it is definitely required, it actually comes up in three different references that we've included in your report. So the lower level will have to be sprinklered. The upper level actually does not have to be sprinklered, the reason the lower level has to be is because there are no direct access egress points out to the exterior to get out of the building from that level. You actually have to go into stair towers and go up a level, and then go out. That's the reason that that level has to be actually sprinkled.
So there's, there's no egress through a window, well?
That doesn't, it actually has to be an actual egress path.
Got it.
To the exterior, so.
Can I just say how great this report is?
It is, it's amazing.
Are we making this available to the public, I hope?
Yeah.
I love the section with the meeting minutes from all the groups that you've met with.
Yeah.
This is so fabulous, to just be able to skim through and hear their.
It's really good.
Feedback and viewpoints, and I particularly like the feedback of the Educational Facilities Planning Committee, two of theirs, the concern expressed of previous projects not thoroughly communicated, and Sagomas history of projects coming in over budgets, so beware of the potential, and I think we're on good start for at least communicating, so, thank you.
Thank you. So to our last part, recommendations, what I'd like to do for this, there is a lot of text here that'll allow you to read at your own leisure, but I would like to walk you through our proposed floor plans. One of the things, we're gonna bring them up on the computer now.
This is in the back section, you're talking about the floor plans?
How many classrooms did we put up that we thought we were gonna get in this project originally?
What are the presentations and stuff?
Yeah, did you remember?
No, it was the exact amount of classrooms on the first floor.
No, because we talked about having some in the basement, too.
Thought so, that's why I just wanted to say.
I'm pretty sure we.
I think.
Katie, wanna ask something? We couldn't, when we met with BCK, they said that the way that the, because the egresses, all we can do is business offices, and we can do a large group instructional is fine, like we can have a great big, like, meeting room, you can have, like, you could have college classes down there, you can have large group gathering spaces, you can use it for anything at all.
Community?
But you can't, yeah, absolutely, community gatherings, you can have a great big room, but you can't put a classroom down there because of the egress issue, but you can have, it can be utilized by any, you know, pre-K through 12th grade, or for, you know, college classes, or for community groups to gather, but we have to keep all our classrooms because of the egress issue.
And that was, and that was presented that way, right, in the forums we had, are you clear about that?
I was not clear about that until we were meeting.
So how many classrooms are we getting upfront?
He's gonna go through that with you right now.
Yep, actually, we're right now.
But we don't have presentations that say more classrooms than we're delivering?
No.
No.
We, I would compromise anything on that.
Okay, cool.
So, I'll start with, the main organizing concept for the building will be by level, as Mrs. Graves just said, because of a number of code issues and a number of egress issues. The main ground floor level, which is the first floor level, will be our, what we say is really early education center curriculum in the truest sense of the daycare programming and the pre-kindergarten programming. And with that, basically what we're doing is keeping the seven of the eight original classrooms as classroom spaces. This actually works out really well with the programs that are going in, the stakeholders' needs. The daycare program, and actually, we've met with several vendors providing daycare, all think that really the needs there are two classrooms. When we met with the pre-kindergarten classroom stakeholders, they really said that they need two more additional classrooms, and then two potential growth classrooms, or a possibility for the program to grow into two more classrooms for a total of four for pre-K. What that allows us, so as you see here on the floor plan, we have those initial two for both the daycare program and the pre-K program, and then we have these three other classrooms that are actually very flexible. We met with the stakeholders, and they thought that a joint project collaboration room would be a good idea, which is very similar to like a very young youth-level maker space, or like if some of you are familiar with the curriculum for Reggio Emilia, an Italian curriculum of students really creating very large pieces, very large motor skills type development projects, it is just really hard to fit into a normal classroom setting. So this classroom can kind of be left for that space, or it can be one of the future growth classrooms.
You're talking about the joint project collaboration?
Yes, that space.
So what you're describing, are you talking about for high school students to use, or I'm confused about?
No, actually, it's for.
Oh, it's for this age level?
For this age level, right, which we're, primarily, too, we're talking about three-year-olds and four-year-olds. So, but the nice thing about it is that it's an additional space that all of the stakeholders thought would be great for the program, however, not required, so if that does need to grow into an additional growth space, it can. Same with the early event, early intervention area, and also for the quiet room area. These are all support spaces that could potentially be reconfigured to also accommodate growth in the pre-kindergarten program or in the daycare program. So one of the main ideas, too, of organizing it in this space is also using technology, such that this entire area, as you see here, can actually be secured electronically. This is one of the requirements for pre-kindergarten and also for daycare by the state, is that those classrooms do not have access to the public, or anyone from the street cannot walk into that space. So this is actually arranged this way, and actually makes a lot of sense, because we can now lock this down with cross corridor doors that actually have access control. So only district members and teaching members, teaching faculty with the proper credentials can go into that space where those children are. The other thing that it also develops is, up here is an administrative piece where the district office would move over to this location. Part of this ties into the security of the building, at the main entrance, having the district office here so that they can see the circulation that goes into the building wherever it's going. Part of this, too, on a small scale, is by including a security office here and this lockdown vestibule that no one can actually go further into the, into the structure without signing in and having the proper credentials and being notified that they are actually in the building.
So I see here that there's an office that says principal, but we have two principals, are you looking at?
No, it's for the daycare and.
The principal, the one that says principal on it?
When we talked with the stakeholders about this building, the thought. the thought was that this complex would need an administrator-principal office. They weren't sure who that would be at this time. But that there would be a need for one for this building.
So would that be...
There has to be one.
Yeah, it has to be an administrator.
So that would be, right, but we talked about putting...
PPS over there.
PPS, so this is kind of, we're putting principal there, but we need someone from our current administrative team would then be housed here, correct?
Yes.
So it's a current administrator that would be there. It wouldn't be that we're not hiring any new administrators, just for the record. That was not part of the proposal, okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
And can I just ask, so you, in the document that you gave us, the booklets, you have an existing first-floor planned layout and then this schematic, which you have up there, which is what you're recommending.
Yes, the existing is to show you what we're actually demolishing. To kind of show you how we have to modify the space. And actually, part of it is to show, too, that on that first floor, and again, that's one of the benefits of our research, is that, jeez, the first floor is almost there. There's not a lot.
I was gonna say, the floor plan essentially doesn't change.
Right, we're maintaining that flexibility of those classroom spaces and kind of keeping true to what the advertisement was to the community of, those classrooms are remaining intact for the most part. It's really the basement level that actually has to get restructured.
Okay, restructured, but in terms of this level, so, since it looks so similar, so just, so where's the money going exactly?
So really, the money goes into the interiors of the building, or in these particular spaces. One of the concepts that we're currently developing is really the idea, and again, it's not to get too much into the design theories, but really, we like to develop metaphors for the buildings so that it can structure all of our efforts on the aesthetic side and how the building looks. Part of what we're doing here is we realize this building has a great history in the community as still a merus. And so, what we want to do is really kind of maintain that integrity of the exterior and the look of the exterior. This also works in concert with the historic preservation of the building. Also, too, as a side note, one of the things we did do is, because of the nature of this and its prominence, we actually already did, worked with New York State and their Historic Preservation Office to get their determination on the building. That's included in your packet as well. They have determined that there is no negative impact of the project on the historic significance of the building, which is fantastic. We were very happy to receive that so early on in the project because it can be very difficult if they feel that further review or further restrictions are necessary. So, it's a real win for the district.
But you're keeping the windows.
But, we thought, yeah, we're keeping the whole kind of look of the exterior. But in the idea that, the metaphor of this is a gateway, a gateway to the children's education, but also a gateway in the very whimsical sense of, like, Alice going into the rabbit hole. You'll see a very kind of normal building on the exterior, but as you move into the spaces, you see a much more dynamic, much more organic interiors to those spaces. And again, this actually also plays into the curriculum of education in that there are many studies showing that, as we talked about before in the kickoff meeting, we need to separate zones that actually work in concert with those different skills buildings that we need with the students. And one way to do that is to really push the envelope of those classrooms so that there are different areas developed with soffit work, with paint, with cabinetry. Again, not to remove flexibility, but to get that student to engage in his environment and to really be interested in that classroom and really partake in what's going on there. So, that's kind of the metaphor we're using, is kind of the whole gateway of this normal exterior. And as you go into the building is where you see all of these elements really begin to manifest themselves of sort of the eye-catching aesthetic elements. And that's where the money is.
So, are you gutting this? What's the story?
No, we're keeping the main containers, but we're developing all of it on the interior of the classrooms. In the wall treatments case, we're ceiling treatments. Again, that's what we feel is the best approach because you're still maintaining your flexibility because you're still keeping the container. But you're still engaging that student by creating the interest on the inside of the classroom where they're gonna be.
Most people, when they think of gutting, they think of what you're talking about, which is changing the walls, the ceilings, the floors, that's kind of...
Yeah, I guess the key part is, if you remember, I was talking about that superstructure and like the actual block walls, they remain in place. So if something, this completely changes and this needs to be annexed for the high school or something, they can strip out those interiors in that casework and you still have that classroom there. So that's a key piece.
But you're just mentioning block walls, so what's on those block walls now? Anything or nothing?
Nothing, now it's just block walls.
So basically, it's all just, we're doing window dressing, that's where the money's going for this level?
Exactly, right.
Well, also making it compliant so that it's handicap compliant. Because that's expensive, we're adding an elevator, right? There's not an elevator now.
Yes, yeah.
Things like that is a big, that's a big expense.
That's one big piece, too, that I wanted to show, that we are adding an elevator now. One of the things, an opportunity we think that exists is that in this courtyard, there's so much work that needs to be done. It's a great place to put that addition, one, because there is a lot going on there that we have to do just to meet code. But by putting it this very specific location, it not only gives us handicap accessibility to the two main levels of the educational wing, but it also gives you access to the main auditorium-gymnasium levels. So, this would be, actually be a three-stop elevator that has openings on both sides. So that up here is the vestibule that makes it accessible to this level. You go down a half-level and you're at this veranda here that would allow you accessibility into the gymnasium. Then you go down another half-level and you're actually in the basement, as you see on your plans, and have perfect access to the basement level.
What's underneath the gym, I mean, on the basement level?
Nothing, it's a slab-on-grid.
It's just, okay.
There is a utility crawl space that goes around the perimeter, but that's only, forgive me, I forget off the top of my head, but I think it's six feet in and it rings the space. But the main floor of the gym is slab-on-grid.
Can you flip to the first-floor code plan or do you not have that on the slide?
Yes, no, I do, I can jump over to that.
I do. Now, I'll preface this question with, I have absolutely no ability to read a map or an architectural piece of art. So just, what I don't see in the early intervention, that last one in the right top corner, correct?
Yes.
And then quiet room, is there a wall in between there? Okay, that's totally my picture. There's a wall, that's...
Oh, is it the printing, did it not come out?
I didn't know if we were, I thought we weren't opening, so that's really just that I can't see that.
Yes, yeah.
It's very light.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it probably is the photo reproduction.
Then the only other question, oh, it's on the basement level. No, it isn't, it's on the first-floor level. Is there really a kitchen and an office over there on, already, outside the auditorium?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
There's a kitchen there.
Is that like a teacher's kitchen?
Actually, there's pictures right in your packet, in the existing, or in the existing photos in the appendix. It's like a residential kitchenette.
So like the teachers could use it?
Yes.
Okay, like a break room?
I think they used to use it for, like, when they were having events, like when they were serving dinner.
Oh, you're right, we had the, what do you call it there one night?
Quiz bowl, okay. Is it almost like North Haven Village Hall has a little kitchen?
I got it.
Like that.
Did you go to Quiz Nights, they used to serve food at Quiz Nights?
Okay.
Is it a commercial kitchen?
Not absolutely.
Now, is that being altered at all in this process? Does it, like, it has to be brought to code, right?
Yeah, currently, actually, there's no code violations in there other than the mechanical systems have to be looked at. But as far as the configuration, there's no problems with it, so.
It's like what you generally see, if you go to other schools, what they have for the booster club. Yeah, what their booster club runs, that's what it's like.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. I thought the kitchen was just in the basement level, there's one on the first floor? It's over here, it's a small one.
It's a kitchen.
Yeah, but it doesn't say kitchen here.
It does, here, if you, I didn't mean to open up a can of worms, keep going, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Here, on this one, it says it. If you look at this, in front of the vestibule.
First floor.
Yeah, it's a small kitchen.
Oh, over here, okay, sorry. That's not the big one we're talking about, that's a little one. It actually, it's not, it's looking in some bad shape.
So, for the basement level, we have several program areas that we're planning. One of the main areas would be the business office for the district, which gets located here, which is a main office suite with several of the support offices that's needed and also Mrs. Buscemi's office. Also, we have the information technologies office with the director's office and an open office area and storage. This also is being planned, part of something of the building that really has not been addressed is data systems and electrical systems. So, as part of the project, it is a complete overhaul of those systems. That was planned for, that was part of the original budget and buildings condition survey. But the opportunity that that affords is the district is looking at this and specifically the director's office as a emergency crisis response command center. Because the new data systems and security systems that are being put into this building actually will exceed any of the other district's buildings just because of the technology is there right now. So, that's another kind of neat benefit for what's happening with the project and happening just as part of the data renovation that's going into the building. Also, we have the large group instruction area that you see here. This is really a multi-function, multipurpose room. It's an open area that large events can be, can take place in. And it also will be fully wired with multimedia so that projections available there, data, power for different events that may need that space. Also, too, we have the commercial kitchen that's going in the back right corner. Now, this is currently where the kitchen is. However, the problem, as you'll see in the existing conditions, is that we found that the main cooking element, the main cooking range, is original from 1964 and doesn't meet any fire codes. There is an Ansel hood system, but it's, again, so old that it actually doesn't meet current fire codes. All of the equipment really has to be replaced, other than there's some possible sink table and a main prep table that might be able to be reused. But there really is no equipment to support what the district is now looking at as far as a fully functioning commercial kitchen. So, this space will actually have all-new commercial kitchen equipment and will actually be able to do food service for not only the two main programs, like student-children program elements, which is the daycare and the pre-K, but also for the elementary school for the district.
And we may have them do some high school stuff that we can't do in our current kitchen, correct? Because we don't have a fully functioning kitchen here.
Right, correct. So this will be a fully functioning food service. And actually, what's kind of interesting and which is nice, it will include the ability to what's called scratch bake, which a lot of districts don't have that ability. It's basically making your own doughs, making your own breads from scratch and from elements. So, all of the equipment will be included in the kitchen for that.
Quick question about the schematic for the basement. The, I see there's a large space for business manager and then the business office, which looks large, but you got, we need space for our team there, a conference room. The room that just says office, what is that for?
This here, this is a two-person office that in our programming meeting said was needed as part of the business managers group.
Separate from, because the business office looks, I mean, there's no...
Yeah, this here, too. We're still working out the details of, does the, do they want for their file copy room a part of the open office or do they want it as a separate room? So half of this whole space that you see here is actually their file copy mail area.
That's four, okay, I couldn't figure out like a really big sectional sofa.
Yeah, we have storage here on the third floor. And we're gonna be seeing the third-floor storage room and bringing everything here.
So as we move into design development, we'll figure out, do we want that completely enclosed as a room? Do you want it more open as like an open office area? You know, those are kind of some of the details that we'll work into as we're going forward.
And I'm sorry, the basement has no windows, should I just say?
Yes, it does.
It does have windows, yes.
Yeah, they're like on the top of the ceiling.
So this is...
There's pictures, you can see, they're partially blocked.
So this is one of the things that we are doing. One of the things you'll find in your existing conditions piece is that there are these concrete area ways, which are large foundation openings to allow sunlight to go to those lower-level basement windows. The issue that we have is that they currently don't meet code. There's no egress ladders from them. The fencing is deteriorated and doesn't meet fall protection codes. And there's no way to access the windows from the interior of the space because they're too high. So, one of the ways that we're approaching this is that on the courtyard side, where we're already short for space for the actual playground area and for activities that are happening there, our recommendation is to infill those and get rid of those because on the other side of it, you have this large group instruction area where primarily, you're gonna be dealing with projection, events that need to control lighting levels, events that will need either, you know, bright lighting from task lighting or to cut the lights way down for some kind of projection or some kind of TV or something like that that you're doing. So our recommendation is get rid of those windows and get rid of the area ways on that side. Then on the other side, fix these area ways because they provide the windows for the actual occupied offices in that business manager's location. So that's one of our recommendations as part of the report. The other thing you'll see there is a little bit more on the site work. There is some site work that is just basic replacement that has to happen on the main sides of the building in the front and on the two sides as far as concrete replacement, curb replacement, cutting back and maintaining the vegetation, things such as that. Where we're anticipating a reconfiguration, though, that we think is a great opportunity because all along the back and also in the courtyard, you have the same problems. But there, you also have drainage problems and there's a circulation problem. One of the things that the stakeholders were talking about, especially on the daycare end, but more importantly on the pre-kindergarten end, is how will parents come to drop off and pick up? And because of just how tight the site is. One of the things that we're planning is to actually, in the back, where we have deteriorated retaining walls that are like lower planner-type things that are falling apart, getting rid of all of those, regrading the whole back and actually creating a drive where you can go down Love Lane, come across the back and exit out onto East, oh, forgive me.
Union Street.
East Union Street, thank you. And so, we've already kind of reviewed this with the stakeholders and they think it's a great idea because they would use the courtyard or use this area here as your staging to bring students out. Parents would come down a one-way drive, pick up their students and then exit. So you have no children crossing any type of vehicular traffic areas.
Right, so, I have two questions on that, and I think it's an interesting idea, I'm glad it's been teed up. One is that, do we have that in our budget?
Yes.
So we have enough money to accomplish everything that we told the public we would do on this and we have enough to do that as well?
Yeah, because that actually, that's where we saw the opportunity is in the budget is replacing and regrading all of that anyways because the asphalt is so bad there and because it's all, the drainage doesn't work. So you kind of have to do that already. The only one little piece that we're changing is at the very end where we actually have to regrade and change that to get our access back out on the Union Street. So that's where we thought, jeez, hey, this is kind of like a win-win.
So, well, the other question is that, well, and I'm trying to imagine, if it's drop-off and pickup, you still have to be able to get around that car if you've gotten your child. It can't be a linear line where you all have to follow each other in or out. Because if that's the case and some child is running late, everybody is backed up behind him. So we wouldn't want that. Because when you have drop-off and pickup, you never have a scenario where that happens. So I assume that wouldn't be the case. But also, are we losing any outdoor space that we were hoping, that we were expecting children? These children obviously need some outdoor space to play.
Yes.
So, it's not, is it taking away at all from any outdoor space that they would engage in?
No, because this is so tight along the back. Right now, all that is, is parking slash drive aisles. So that's where the entire play area, we're actually increasing because we're getting rid of those area ways. And so, we're actually increasing the amount of space that they have for their playground area as it is now.
But, Ed, before someone watches this video and misunderstands, the space to drive through is linear?
Yes, it is, correct.
I just...
You can only fit one car.
So what happens if Johnny's in the bathroom and running, sorry to any Johnny here, but Johnny's in the bathroom running late, so he's not out as fast as Mary, Sue and Tom? And they're in their cars and they're behind Johnny's mom who's in the front, everybody waits?
I think that the logistics of drop-off and pickup will be figured out. I know the other...
I know the other districts have similar issues and they've, they've got cards and they've got a system and they, and they work those sorts of things out.
Yeah, and actually, we've seen that in a number of districts where they do prefer the linear because as soon as you deviate from that, then you get cars passing other cars.
Which can be dangerous. I'm just wondering because we've never done it here.
Yeah, we, we've actually seen a lot of public schools where even in elementary schools, um, they're using a linear approach. The key thing that we think is a great opportunity that you have here is you have stacking space. Because it actually, you can stack all the way down Love Lane because your, the primary circulation that you want to get off of is Division Street. So, you know, it, it's kind of a nice setup for that organization.
Can I just throw something out? I just want to say with, in the committee that you guys all talk about this, did we by any chance bring in the police department to have?
This is why it's initial, initial, initial design.
I mean, this is, I, from all due respect, this is not initial. We got this and then we're going to what's going to the state, so I'm just saying.
No, there's actually a step in between there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so when do you plan on sending these to the state?
This gets sent like at the end of August, early September to the state.
And we, we actually, our, our next plan was to sit down with the village and talk because we do still have the parking at, at St. Andrews, so there is no end game, but we.
So we had that fine out?
No.
Okay.
But the, um, so one, this was one of the options because they have seen this replicated in so many other places that they, they thought taking, parents getting out of the vehicle and putting the children in, where literally they would be put each child right into the car seat, they'd move on. It doesn't, again, this is just for food for thought, they can, you know, bet this, but it was a, um, strong component from our pre-K teacher that, you know, um, she's, she thought she had seen this and this had been something that, you know.
I think the concept's good. I don't think, I think the part, as I was gonna finish, the, the, I think the concept is a really great idea. I actually like it a lot. I know exactly back there, I went to school there for three years. My concern is gonna be exactly what happened to the drop-off at the elementary school, where they just, they started just slamming signs all over because it didn't go smooth enough or quick enough. So that's what I'm saying, before we all get excited about this, we really need to speak to the village and see what they think is the most feasible way to do it. But the concept in itself sounds great, but if I'm car back here and I'm waiting and I gotta be in appointment and Johnny's in the bathroom, I'm unhappy.
All right, so I, I used to actually live right around the corner from the building, so I know this stretch very well and I know exactly what you're talking about back there. A couple of things concern me. I, I understand why you're wanting to take those window wells to maximize that courtyard area. I just wanna say personally, it concerns me to take away windows that you've got there, but I, I understand the rationale and I think if that's the direction. But in terms of, it, it's still very tight, you're right, and it's very, um, it's very city-ish. I don't know what have the word to describe it there.
I don't think that's a word to let you know. I'm not sure it's in the dictionary.
Yeah, and, no.
And it feels sort of more open in the back, so let me just throw it, urban, thank you. I, I just want to throw out something else too. When, when you have people coming down the side, as you're suggesting, and I believe there is a road right now that cuts right all the way through to the other one.
Yes.
That means you've got people stacking on Division, which is a main issue. If the pickup is on the other side, which is on Union, it means they're coming in from residential streets where there are not as many people. I used to live back there, it's not an issue. And literally the teachers can take them from there with the same concept and come around to the side and you don't have some of the other issues and you don't lose that space. So I just want to throw that out for everybody to think about, that you can accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, still have the, uh, issue that the, the teachers try to hit you, which I, makes sense, you get these younger kids, what have you, and have better issues with your traffic, you still have the opt-out and you don't lose your outdoor space. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Right, yeah, no, and.
No, no, in other words, not, Susan's not doing it the way you're saying. In other words, that she would come out and go to the right and they would drop off.
On the curb.
At the, at the, at the gate there, right to the sidewalk, to a car, yes, exactly.
But coming the other direction.
Yeah, they'd be coming down from this way.
But, but.
So then you don't have traffic sitting up.
Ed is saying that he's not losing any outdoor space.
But you are losing, I mean, I, I know the space. You are losing outdoor space.
You are.
Did you want to add something?
I mean, you're, you're losing outdoor space. I think what I, to clarify, you're not losing current playground space.
Right.
But it is potential outdoor space that's a little more open than what you have in the courtyard.
But we will, we will need an avenue through there because we're gonna have to, um, we're gonna have to move in lunches. So we will need a drive-through in that back for picking up the lunches, but, so, just, just for something.
But, well, I mean, just to stop you, there is, the nice thing is that we're, we're looking at a drive-through for pickup and drop-off as part of the program. There is so much site work that needs to happen. It facilitates it in the current project as it's set up. So we can actually continue to research those both options, either doing across the back or down Union Street as well.
I just want to add that I think down Union Street is better because if you're going down Love Lane, you're gonna back up into one, onto 114. I've seen that happen, um, and that's an issue. So I think Susan's idea is a good one.
Yeah, I've lived there for years. I know that spot very well.
Yeah, that's definitely, that's definitely a possibility.
Well, and also, what, whatever, uh, I'm glad it's getting teed up now because I would assume we're gonna have more public conversation and I would really hope that we do an outreach to the, to the people who live locally so that they can participate in the conversation if they want to as well. And voice any questions or, you know, concerns that they might have. As, this is a technical question, but I just, I'm not familiar with when this is done. If it was gonna be like that, does the driver stay in the car and an employee puts the student into the car, correct?
My girlfriend has a tag that hangs from a rearview mirror that has a number on it and they, they see the kid, they line the kids up, they can see from their windshield which kid goes and they got the kids lined up in the ordering.
I would think that the parents would be very appreciative instead of having to park.
Get out, yeah.
God knows where.
They can still do that, they can do the same thing, but just the car comes out of Union.
I understand coming the opposite way.
And then honestly, the other thing that I don't like about what you're suggesting is then you've got cars all along here that are sitting there idling. You know, I'm, I'm gonna set you, but I don't like the kids near the, that kind of air conditioning.
You would have the same thing along the Union Street.
No, but it's not, no, but it's not, not right next to the school. It's coming down the other way. It's not like, it's not like going right into the, the back into the area or sitting along here going to the gym. It's coming down a different stretch. And actually, that's the way I believe Salameras actually used to do. That's where they used to do their buses.
The buses were down that way.
So the, the community, the, it was used to.
The Love Lane piece and that's.
And they would have three buses, maybe four.
Anyway, so just, just a thought.
This is really just a brief overview.
No, that's, that's.
This is, this is.
But it's helpful to have this stuff now as opposed to, I think, in the last project, when stuff came up later.
No, 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 it's good, no.
Yeah, I don't want to add alternates, get told after they're put in.
It's not one of the surprises. This is, this is to prevent surprises like the last project.
That's like, when I say that this is your homework, that's a perfect example of the information that helps us out. So, yeah, like, if you have thoughts like that with other pieces that you come across, um, if you can get that information to, um, Mrs. Graves, she can get it to our design team and that really helps us.
We're not shy about piping it in.
This is really helpful.
For better or worse.
So that's really our, our main organization and our intent going forward into design development. And, um, uh, one of the things too, I'll have Mr. Sands now talk about kind of some of the ongoing things that are going on right now as we speak, uh, and our next steps moving forward, so.
Thanks, Ed. Some of the ongoing, uh, items that are happening, as Ed has mentioned, that are kind of like behind the scenes right now, but, um, the site survey is being, has been performed, so we're waiting to get that downloaded for us. Uh, once we have a site survey, we can begin to develop and design for contours and pavements of such for the site. That's being done by your consultants, Squires Holden, Weisenbach and Smith. And also at the same time, um, J.C. Broderick is going through doing a full building hazardous materials assessment. That's everything that could be considered to be, uh, in this day and age as hazardous materials is being tested. All the roofing materials, I need the caulk and ceilings around the windows and the doors. Uh, any of the existing building materials inside, which include piping insulation, floor tile, um, paint, uh, lead-based product is all being tested, so we have a full-blown analysis of the whole building.
And actually, what's kind of nice, this is the vendor from the district that had done the previous testing that you were mentioning. So they're not repeating anything because they have all of their old files that they supplemented with. So this is all new and additional testing that's being done.
We've also been in, um, in dialogue with Mr. Yardley. The Sag Harbor Superintendent.
I was like, what's Yardley? Oh, no offense.
Yeah, you're Sag Harbor.
That's D, yes, that's D, that's D. And, uh, so he's, he's on board with us. So we're usually on a monthly basis, I'm on the phone with him, talking about asking some specific questions, uh, specifically about curb cuts, uh, you know, pavement cuts, what's the, what's the scenario? How do we do this? How do we not do this? Uh, we're also involved with discussions with the Suffolk County Water Authority, understanding, uh, what we need to do for our water tie-ins. Uh, so we're kind of a little bit ahead of schedule on that. And we've also reached out to, um, the New York State DEC and Suffolk County Health Department regarding our septic system and sewage discharge. So we are actively engaged, working with them as well. One of the, uh, items that we're really looking at is, uh, looking at the condition of the existing storm, uh, retention system on-site as well as the existing sewage system. Squires Holden, Weisenbach and Smith is working through, uh, getting a, a materials condition assessment of the items that are on-site, making sure that they're, they're able to be reused. And again, at the same time, we are discuss, in discussions with DEC and Suffolk County Health Department regarding the septic system and making sure that we can reuse the septic system that is on-site. So those are currently going, uh, underway as we speak.
We moved kindergarten over there, correct?
No.
Or not?
Pre-K.
Just pre-K?
Yeah, because kindergarten would want to continue to be part of the morning program.
So this is only four, four rooms with, with children during the day?
Well, there also be, um, and, no, also, um, uh, uh, for children that would need early intervention for Suffolk County.
Five.
So is in there, I'm sorry, seven classrooms that are going to?
But what is a quiet room and what is a collaboration room? So those are add-ons to, to having, is early intervention separate all day? Are, are children pulled out for specific things and, and using the early intervention room for that?
Or is it a class?
Well, it depends on which, we have a couple of different directions to go in for early intervention. So we have, um, there is, there's, um, folks that provide that service that are interested in, in just leasing space from us or we can, um, work with Suffolk County directly. So there's, um, there's a couple of different avenues that this district will have, have options. But, um, I think that what we're gonna see is once we have the daycare in place, we don't, we don't want to over-predict. We don't want to say all these rooms are gonna be filled. But the fact is that once daycare is provided from seven-thirty in the morning until five-thirty at night, I think we're gonna see our, our pre-K.
Grow.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, definitely.
And I, and I think that we're, we're being very conservative as we always try and be in the daycare. But I think we're also gonna see a, a, we're, I think that folks are gonna want to use our daycare. I think we're gonna see it especially in our teachers. I think that, um, those rooms are gonna fill. But we put, we, you don't want to fill up rooms and say to your taxpayers, all those rooms are gonna get filled because that, that's disingenuous. You want to be conservative and say what we, we're looking at right now. So the folks we spoke to, they were giving us what they currently need. But if they're alongside of our pre-K and our pre-K is alongside daycare, you're, I think you're gonna see a shift. And also for folks that are reaching out for intervention services and they find it right here on the east end, again, you're gonna see a shift.
So if it grows beyond what's currently being provided based on the current input you've gotten, we do have enough room to expand here.
Yeah, and that's, and that's how they've, they've built it.
That's terrific.
What's the maximum amount of children or does it depend on specialty in a room?
The, the, the current maximum number of children per room? For three-year-olds, I believe it was, I have to check my, the, no, it's not, it's right in there. It's actually written on board in the meeting minutes.
Yeah, it breaks it down.
What?
It does, it does depend on the age and it depends on what you're doing.
Size of.
The rooms are, are.
It's much smaller than.
But we do have it right here.
It's page twenty-one.
And, um, if you notice too, they also were thoughtful about putting bathrooms in each of the rooms too. That was, that was not.
This says, uh, three or four-year-olds, twelve to fifteen students.
Yes.
Sixteen or seventeen is the maximum you can have. Pre-K seventeen to eighteen is the maximum.
Yes.
Um, can I ask you a quick question about budget? So page sixty-six, I see you have totals phases two, six point three-three-seven million.
Oh, keep in mind, the, the append, you're in the appendix. That's the existing condition survey that was given to us. That's not our, those are not our numbers. We're currently working on our first actual line item cost estimate.
Oh, so were those numbers provided by VDS?
Yes, we'll need to note, we should note that one before we put it online.
Yeah, I think it was, actually, I believe it was, wasn't it a different? I believe it was a different AE firm.
Oh, they gave us a second.
That gave you a second amendment, yeah.
We did request, we, we did make a request to have a second firm weigh in on what they thought the cost was.
Yes. So, okay, but, but can I just get to my main question? So, so, um, this was just what they proposed for doing, just to bring it up to code? Or you feel that this number isn't even close? And is it just, is phase two capturing all of our needs or was there a phase one that's missing?
So the, the phase, I'm not sure what the phase one was. We were not given those documents.
I don't know, I just have to ask about the format.
Oh, is that the purchase, okay.
It was the purchase of the building and we did that.
So this was phase two.
Three point three million.
The phase two, um, it does not include all of the items that we've included. It is namely like as a, for instance, it does not include, I don't believe, all of the items in the auditorium, uh, gymnasium area. Um, it does not include sprinklers from the basement level.
Oh, boy.
I thought you said we have it.
On the flip side though, there are some things that it does include that we were kind of scratching our heads on. There's like, in one section, they say the windows don't have to be replaced, but in the, in another section, they do and include costs there, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on that.
And you guys have been through it and feel that none of them need to be replaced?
Correct, yeah, exactly.
So that's some good news.
So that's where, like, so that's where there's, there's some give and take.
And then remind me, what was the number that we went out to the community? What did we say with cost?
Jennifer, can you give us the number?
It was the three point three plus the six point, um, yes, so it was.
So six point three for this two.
So we got, we, this is what our budget is then basically. And so, okay.
And do you feel you can do, that, that we can do what we committed to the community, what was gonna get done in this project? You feel like that's enough money to get it done?
That's a lot.
We're not there yet.
No.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Hold on, hold on, can I get an answer from the expert, please?
Yeah, no, that's what I was saying, I, I'm still kind of learning the, the commitment to the community part, so that's why it's a little hard for me to answer that question. I think to renovate the entire building with everything that I understand the stakeholders would like to have.
That's right here, yeah.
Um, it is in excess of six point three. So.
Right.
Okay, so that's what, the point where you said that we have to make some decisions.
Correct.
Right, based on.
Can I just go there?
Where is that document?
That, that's what we're working on currently.
Oh, okay.
As soon as, as soon as our, our actual cost estimate is done, we'll provide it for the board.
So what we're hearing is that this, that to do what we, we think, to do what we had talked about publicly before the vote, may exceed the money that we asked the taxpayers to approve.
No, as I said, I'm not sure what was talked about before the vote.
Oh, the plans that are in here, the plans you have in here to execute.
Yeah, to, to, to fulfill everyone's wish list, it's in excess, I believe, of the six point three. But to, to actually create an early education center based on the main program elements that we initiate in the report, I think we can meet the six point three.
Okay.
I think certain decisions have to be made though, which will present to you different options on, on how to proceed, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sandy.
I just want to say that it did, I think that when those decisions need to be made, I will not be sitting here, but those decisions need to be made in these rooms, not after they're, they're done. So any, I, I've done four building projects, first time I've heard add alternates, I've called them change orders. Whatever they're gonna be, they need to be done and discussed in here prior, I know, prior to F to B then. I just want to put that on record that, because we're getting a little flack that, oh, the board had to go out again, they messed this up. No, 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 no. So these kind of conversations should take place in these, in these walls with a camera rolling. Because I agree with you, I think you'd be able to do a great, a great scenario of what you showed, but you're not gonna know until you get in there what, what pipe is not good or what's right. And those are gonna come up and they're, they're. Because I agree with you, I think you'd be able to do a great, a great scenario of what you showed, but you're not going to know until you get in there what, what pipe is not good or what's, and those are going to come up and they're, they're going to have to be choices made. But the public needs to understand that we're not getting A because we have to pay for something to put a kid into that room. That, and that needs to be very transparent, because I feel that that might have been lost a little bit.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And, and that's kind of a little bit of a preference too, as far as to, to kind of help alleviate sticker shock.
Yes. Absolutely.
Our, our opinion of probable cost that we'll provide you with includes everything.
Yes. Right.
So that we can begin to kind of sift through that and work through that together as a team to identify, okay, where does the six point three involve? And what, what does that create?
Right.
Right.
And, and I, and yeah, and just, I want to make sure that if there's other things that the community thinks they're getting and there's not money for all of it, that they have a chance to also, we have a chance to hear from them as well.
Right.
Before decisions are made.
You know, that's what, one of the things that's tough is this timeline, and it's the summer and as we know, the public just doesn't come to meetings in the summer.
But they don't come in the winter anyway.
Well, no, we, we definitely get way more in the winter, because the summer, you know, that's a shame.
Okay, so I, I have a clarification question. When you say everything, this was kind of developed with the monies and the plans, kind of the general plan for what was voted on, the bond. And these are stakeholders from the school that talked about various things and you guys just put it all in there.
Correct.
And you, and so that's the number, that's the project you say that probably cannot be met with the money that we have.
Correct.
So that's going to have to be pared back probably.
Correct, like as a very good example, it revolves around the auditorium gymnasium space.
You know, because those are the decisions.
Like as part of that, I, I don't know if this ties into what you're thinking.
There's a great need in the, in the district from some of the administrators and some of the curriculum people thinking that there'd be, it'd be a great space for alternative physical activities such as climbing wall structures or extragaming setups
because of the new data structure that's going to be there, things like that, which would be fantastic.
Okay, well, thank you, I love your ideas.
There's nothing in the six point three to cover that.
That would cover that.
So, that kind of, exactly.
A lot.
Just, just, just for clarification, we, when we went out, out and, and, you know, we stood and, and this is on video, we talked about the big rocks and we were clear that it was daycare, pre-K, early intervention, food service, just moving the district offices so we could have an authentic middle school and then district and community extracurricular. We, if, as, as there's other things, and, and that is in that six point three, that's, that's the ragu, that's all in there. And I think we're really close, so I bet we're going to find out we're really close on that. And then if there's other things, just like anything we do in the district, we can build those items in as we move forward because we're going to own Stellamaris. But for the bond project, the bond project, those are the big rocks that we talked about. You know, and other things that we see, and if the community comes back and says, you know what, we really felt like we wanted this, this and this, and we heard, you know, sometimes there's a perception, they hear things that they thought they were going to have. We still have a budget every year. We still have a budget that we can, we can move forward with because I think this is going to be an exceptional space. So before, you know, we get too, too reactive to that, I think this is still, having, having an authentic middle school. So by moving the pre-K, by moving the, you know, the administrative offices, I think that is going to be a huge rock for our community and then revitalizing this space is the most important thing. And I think when, that, you know, BCK does their work, I think we're going to find out we're really close. So I think we have to continue to give them that feedback, but also, you know, realize this is what we went out to the community over and over and over again and said we wanted. And I think we're going to find out we're probably pretty close.
A question about, um, uh, what we went out with the community, I think when we did in the presentations, we talked about that there would be, um, two areas where there would be additional personnel cost. One was, um, custodial and the other was security, right?
Custodial.
Those were the only two areas that would increase headcount and personnel cost, correct? That's what we had talked about, right? I just want to make sure.
See, I'm, I don't have that extroverted, I always have to go back and look at my notes.
Yeah, I would have to look that up.
Yeah, that, that sounds right to me.
But it's not, it sounds like you're in the.
Why, what are you questioning, Chris?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confirming, I'm confirming that just because as we're starting to talk about the project again, and with the last, with the last project, for a variety of reasons, there was confusion along the way about what was being added and what cost or the implications. As we're kicking this conversation off, I think it's good to just level set and remind, okay, that is what. So in, in what I've read and what I've looked at and what I listened to and what we had done at the time, that's what I saw. So I'm just reconfirming so that in six months, if something else comes up, it's not, oh, yeah, you know, it was a surprise.
Well, Stellamaris still hangs right on our website and we put it, there is no more transparency than anybody could ask for. So I, that I don't know it right off the top of my head, um, any, any of our taxpayers can reference what we said we'd be applying to it. And, you know, I, I know that there was increased custodial and I know that there was security.
Yeah, that's what it is.
The gym looks like it's in great shape from the photo.
It is, it is, it's just not, it's not basketball, it's not.
The floor isn't for anything that ball hits.
They used to play basketball there, so.
They can, they can do cheerleading practice there on there, there's no doubt about it.
They had some kind of different air in the balls back then.
Little schoolgirls would love to play volleyball there.
Yeah, little schoolgirls would love to play volleyball on there. It's, it's not, it's not terrible.
And, and you can also hold events on it too, and that's something that you really can't do on a wood court as well. I mean, there's advantages to, to.
But there, but there is that room in the basement that's a huge community room, so that could end up serving a lot of what those community things might be. Um, you just mentioned, um, uh, one of the reasons we're doing this is because of having a more discreet middle school. If this is, you know, if the goal is for this to open, you know, a year from September, right? So, so during the course, which is very exciting, it's exciting to work on a bond project that you can get something like this done so quickly, because I think it'll, it'll just resonate and solve some issues we have. So I would imagine in the coming year, we'll talk about how we create a more discreet middle school, because it's not just about space. So many middle schoolers are going into the high school because we shared instructors with the, with the high school and the middle school. So that's what gets them out of the, the middle school to a great extent is because they're going to, to language in the high school, they're going to art.
They'll just do that.
So, so, well, so it'll be, I think it's important for us to really have those conversations about how do we really create a discreet space and what we have to change and what we're doing now to create it.
Right, right.
Gentlemen, do you have anything else for the board?
Thank you.
No, is there any other questions at this table?
Any other questions, sir?
If, if, just to reiterate, if there's anything else, like something that comes up, Mrs. Graves and Sammy knows how to get in touch with us and get us questions or.
Great job, really, really good job.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Very much.
What a difference.
What a difference. Uh, they'll be back on the nineteenth, they'll be back in like.
Yes, we'll be back on the nineteenth.
Thank you.
Awesome.
A few weeks.
Thank you very much.
So this is actually your homework, but I think you didn't, you didn't.
That's great.
Quite a bit of it now.
We read it pretty quick.
It's exciting to see.
At this time, I'd like to move on to the personnel actions. Um, can I get a motion to strike personnel action number one from the agenda?
So moved?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions two and three?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Um, we did not have public input number two on the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure if there was anybody in the public that wanted to come up and speak.
I think you have to repeat that.
All right, can I get a motion to, during the board meeting?
No, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Hold on, I've got a question too.
Does the building have a name?
I just said that, I just said that, I just asked Teresa, so we got something.
All right, so, um, thank you for bringing that up because it slipped my mind. We need to talk about the process of how to name the building, if we want to keep the name the same, if we want to change the name, if so, who decides, blah, 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 blah. Um, so, um, at this time, um, I guess we'll just go around and let everybody weigh in, Sandy, thoughts?
I have no idea. This is one I, I've thought about for like, uh, two weeks now, because somebody's like, oh, when's Stellamaris open, I'm like, Stellamaris closed. So Sacred Hearts is Sacred Hearts who made the elementary school week at Pearson Pearson. So, right course, so I'm like, I, I don't, I don't, that one, I still call it Saint Andrews, so I don't know, I, I'm off on that one. I think it's an agenda item that needs a lot of discussion because I've been thinking about it as well and it's, I always refer to it as Stellamaris as well, so, I'm not sure.
I, I think that, I don't have a problem keeping it Stellamaris, I think even if we change the name, people will call it Stellamaris anyway. Um, and Stellamaris translates to Star of the Sea, um, which seems appropriate as well. I didn't go to school there, I don't have any times, ties to the name, but, um, I liked the name.
I did, I was going to say Saint Andrews.
I know, that's why I wanted to ask.
I'm a Saint Andrews, so.
Do you want to weigh in on it?
Just that it doesn't have any, I think folks are concerned that it has some religious ties. I think if you Google Stellamaris, you'll find a lot of Italian restaurants. You will not find many religious connotations. So, um, I did refer to it as, I had to come up with a, a, a name, so I call, I'm calling it currently the Stellamaris Project. So it isn't the Stellamaris, you, because we had former Stellamaris, and so I finally had to come up with a name, so it's just been the Stellamaris Project currently. But I, I don't, um, I think folks have been concerned that it has a religious connotation and it doesn't, it's just a Latin translation.
Tom, John?
The Margaret, Margaret Olivia Solcom Sage Education Center.
Does that have a nice acronym?
Um, this is Mrs. Russell Sage who donated the original building and, and grounds for this school.
Oh, she asked if it has a nice acronym.
That's a long name to remember, I think, I, I'd have to write that down.
Well, I just kind of wanted to clarify.
The acronym would be what?
It could be Mrs., well, I, I'm not, you know, suggesting an acronym.
Hang, hang on, let him.
Or Mrs. Russell Sage or Russell Sage Education Center, uh, um, after the first benefactor of the district.
Stephanie?
I have two answers. Um, Stellamaris Public School sounds fun to me, but I'm wondering with a very big disclaimer that says, no offense, you don't get the final vote. But can Scott put something up on our website that you cast a really big net and let the entire community say what they would name it? Like name the school contest and see if somebody smarter than us or comes up with something cuter or?
Bodie McBoface.
I'm, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
What'd she say?
Well, she said, you're going to wait till public number two?
Someone's had a long day.
But you're right.
But I mean, maybe Scott could do that.
Steve, you can go home, have your issue at nine.
I, I agree with Teresa that I think it, that this is a longer conversation and that we're going, there's probably many people in the community that have opinions. I really like the idea of a survey, I like the idea of it being on the agenda, so people want to stand up here and say, it should be Bodie McBoface, we hear them say that. I, I gravitate towards not Stellamaris because it, I know, I understand it's not religious, but there's a preconceived association that it is a religious school. So, but that's just my opinion and you're going to get twenty opinions to twenty people, so I like the idea of, and potentially maybe a survey's done, maybe it goes to the facilities. I always call them the facilities committee and they give us the top five, or maybe we talk, we look as a board and say, here's the top five we like and put it out there for discussion. But, but, um, I also like the idea of honoring Mrs. Sage, I just wouldn't want it to be too, too long, you know? Because we go, we say she's because it's too long, so I, I, you know. Versus Pearson's easy because it's two syllables, you can put it on a T-shirt if we wanted to do anything, you know, that, that had the name on it, you want it to be easy. And that little kids can say it, because that's, little kids are going to be there.
Susan?
I agree with everything that's been said, including Bodie McBoface. So, I mean, I love that it's, I love that.
Anybody have an objection to Scott putting together some sort of, sort of blast, an informal?
And I really appreciate hearing what the name meant, and I'm, I'm just curious also as to how that came about.
I was Saint Andrews.
No, I know, I know Saint Andrews is prior to that.
It was changed to a regional school.
It was a regional Catholic school.
Right.
It used to be Saint Andrews and it was just St. Carver, and then it was changed to a regional elementary school and that's the name that they chose. I chose, by the way, Margaret Olivia Solcom Sage because that is her name. And, you know, we always call her Mrs. Russell Sage and I, I'd like to give her credit.
Margaret Olivia?
Solcom Sage, I, I know it's a long, it's a mouthful.
It's Moss.
The Moss School?
The Ross Sage.
And I know it's the Moss.
The Moss School.
No.
No.
For Sage, Sage Elementary.
So, when does the decision need to be made by, so we can work backwards?
August of two thousand eighteen.
No, because we're going to have to have it before the day it opens. Right, I assume, I assume there's a day, there's a go, no go for signage, for the thing.
We'll, we'll figure.
So figure that out and we can work backwards.
Okay, I'm sorry, and my next question before you adjourn, and, and I don't know the answer, Katie, um, is the cross still on top of the building?
Um, we, we get a certificate of occupancy, we're going to, um, have them take it down. They recommended that we not take it down until we had a certificate of occupancy, so we had insurance on it, but they found all the parts of it, because it had been, it had actually fallen apart. And then the architect's recommendation is for the board to gift it to the church.
To the church.
Right, that's what, yes, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what was my suggestion from the beginning that.
And I've kind of leaked that to the church too, so I'm sorry about that, because they've asked me, they didn't kind of, so I was like, if it's coming back to your, your way.
May I do it? Yeah, I think we need to gift it back, I'd like to see it, I, I'm very high on plaques, I'd like to see.
I'm still waiting on the case to be built, I mean, and Will Monner's getting done in a week, so we could do the other one too.
But, um, I, I'm, I'm, one, I, I would love to see it regifted with, with, uh, a gift from Moss or whatever it is. Well, with thanks back to the church.
Sage.
No. Our gift was three point two million dollars.
I'd like to see it with some meaning gifted back.
No, I'm. I can get examples of how they've done it in other, other districts because, um, it's not the first time that they've, they've done it.
Right.
I, I can ask the architects for examples.
Thank you.
Sure.
I wouldn't spend a lot, so I'd rather spend the, on our own ones that we need to do here.
I, I know, but at the end of the day, Sandy, that's.
I'm just saying, anything else for old business?
Um, related to that, uh, when do we anticipate having an agreement with the archdiocese for parking, since that's a critical need and we purchased it without that?
I work on it in July, I know, I'm just, we are super, we, every, you know how your nights look, my days look like that right now. We're just, every night and every day is, is.
So, so, but by the end of the summer, we think we'll have an agreement with them?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
That's sure, that's.
Or you might always have a handshake, Chris.
Well, they, they've, they've agreed to it, they've agreed to it.
I know they've agreed to it, but I don't know, you know, even our own attorneys told us that we might have a handshake.
Well, we, for, for insurance reasons, we would need to have a legally written agreement before we could have employees park cars there.
Absolutely.
So that's why they've said to us, we need a legal agreement, that's why I'm just asking when we would have it.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Our attorney.
Okay.
The district's attorney.
Anything else for old business?
One, one old business, and I don't know if it's going to, um, when we're going to see it, but, um, and I, that I thought about it coming over here, that it wasn't on this list. Last week, um, the will of the board said that we were going to be, uh, moving forward with an investigation on the confidentiality issues we have with the current board. And so I know that we were supposed to, there was supposed to be an exploration about cost of an attorney for that or, or securing an attorney or next steps and, um, that that vote would be public, but we hadn't, there was no update tonight.
Um, the only cautionary thing was, I think that that, um, vote was made in the executive session, so if we were, if we're doing an expenditure of public funds, you would need to make that.
It wasn't, it was a vote, it wasn't, there was no vote, but the will of the board was to move forward with it, so I thought tonight.
But if it's, if it's an expenditure of public, if public funds, which an investigator would, um, you just need to have a public vote on it, that's right.
No, no, that, that's why I'm asking, because there was nothing on here about that public vote.
And what the cost would be.
And what the cost would be in any of that, so I was, that's why I was asking publicly, because.
Oh, was I supposed, I, I.
Not you, I don't think it was, I mean.
Diana wasn't in the meeting.
No, no, I, I know, I know, I was in.
She's going to be briefed that way.
Yeah, she, no, so that's why I'm just asking, because that was that kind of a, a next to do, but it wasn't, it wasn't for tonight.
All right, so we'll need to get the cost then.
Okay, all right.
I, well, either that or we just do it at a max up and put out a RFP afterwards. Who's done that before, not to exceed?
Not to exceed. You mean, you know, have a vote now about not to exceed and then we can just move forward?
I'd, I'd like to know what these things cost, I have no idea, so I don't even know how we could set a number like that and know that.
I can bring it to you on Monday.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but, but Susan's not here on Monday? So if she would want to weigh in, she won't be here on Monday to weigh in.
So I'm going to do the vote. I didn't think that's, we'll, we'll bring the information on when we gather.
Because, because again, the, what we have done in the past, I think actually we should do while everyone's here, since it's such an important decision to make, is we've had, in the past, we have voted when to proceed with a cap.
Not to exceed.
And say, okay, the cap might be twenty-five thousand, let's vote if it's no more than twenty-five thousand or whatever the number is.
The last time we hired an investigator, we went through Tom Vols' office, like he got us a contract and then we approved the contract. We never, since I'm here, we've never adopted a resolution. We never, since I'm here, we've never adopted a resolution with a cap for an investigator.
No, I'm not talking about... I'm not talking about an investigator, but we've had several times voted on a cap for an expenditure of some sort, and said, as long as it doesn't exceed that, we can proceed, so that was the, that was the suggestion. At least, but since I've been on the board, since I've been on the board, it's happened, so...
But if today is Wednesday, Chris, can you wait till Monday?
It's not about me waiting, it's, it's about having the whole board being able to weigh in, that's all, and we're all here tonight, and it's, but if you wanna do it when not, the whole board isn't here, we can wait.
So at this point, I think I heard a motion on the floor, that you would like to, why don't you restate your motion, Chris, what's your motion?
The motion is to proceed with approving hire, paying for the investigation, not to exceed 25,000 dollars without future board approval. It may be 5,000, I have no idea, but I'm just putting it out there so that the entire board could weigh in on it.
If you're making a motion, there has to be a number.
Right, so...
And then we discuss the number.
Not to exceed 25,000 dollars for an...
I, I would say it probably, if I had 10, at the most.
So is there, is there a second on the motion to proceed with an investigation not to exceed 25,000 dollars?
I'll make it 10, if, if 25 is too high for people, I just think that it...
Okay, so I just wanna be clear, there's a motion on the floor that we proceed with an investigation to explore, what exactly?
Well, there is grave concern by some board members that there, there's been, that the confidentiality required as a board member has been violated on multiple occasions.
So, but this is, this is for the minute, so can you make it precise?
Sure, so that's why, and, and when raised by our, to, when it has been raised, we have, it's been advised that, under these circumstances, an investigation should be done and conducted. So there is a motion to conduct an investigation with, with an expense not to exceed 10,000 dollars.
A motion to investigate the...
The breach of confidentiality.
Breach of confidentiality on the board.
Correct.
Okay, can I get a second on the motion on the floor?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, you know, I, I, in the last meeting, you know, I, I think it is, there is an issue, and there's definitely something to be concerned about, I think it's very serious. But for me, I would like to first under, have a better understanding of what's involved, get prices from Tom, and understand that before I would support this, like, it just, I just wanna be upfront about that. Okay, Stephanie, discussion?
I don't know what it entails, and 10,000 dollars seems like a tremendous investment for something that we can resolve in a retreat.
Tommy John?
It's a lot of money, I don't think this is the best use of the board's time, energy, and the district funds. And I, too, certainly would like to see information from our attorney as to what this actually is, so that's where I'm at.
I, I, too, feel like this is not the best use of the board's expenses and energies, I agree that it should be addressed at a retreat.
I think it's much bigger than a retreat, I think there are issues that we have been grappling with all year because of breach of confidentiality, and a board member can be removed from board service because of this, and I think it's extremely serious, and I think we need to take it seriously. And if there's no issue, then we don't have anything to be concerned about going forward for the investigation.
Thank you, Sandy.
I have to say that there's always a slippery road that you're on when you're on a board executive, there's many times when we go, wait a second, is that executive? And we have to check ourselves, so I'm sure that happens out in public. Unfortunately, when it gets into print, and it starts to get sent around to hundreds and hundreds of people, that's concerning, that's extremely concerning. And for a board of education member who takes the oath of office to do so, to, to behold that, and think it's not a big deal when it's in black and white, is scary for me, it really is scary, because we take that oath, and we should take it seriously. I understand what you're saying about, you know, 10,000 dollars is a lot of money, we flip money around here like it's candy, guys, I mean, I hate, I mean, I've seen it over many years. So for me, we've done retreats, they've never ended well, because nobody wants to talk about the elephant in the room, and you know that. So, they've done your retreat, you're bringing the same person back who is unable to get through to the seriousness, we've spoken to the attorney about it on occasions, and he said that's the next step, so, and it was less than three weeks ago, it, it went around the town in an email, if I ever say it's not a good... I wouldn't be surprised if there's lawsuits coming down over stuff like this, so, you know, I think it has to be addressed, I really do. So you might not think 10,000 dollars is a lot now, but, I mean, I think about how much a lawsuit's gonna cost down the road.
I just wanna add one more thing, which is that I don't think the retreat is the answer, we've had the attorney come in on multiple occasions to instruct the board, and afterwards, there's been violations, when you call the New York State School Board Association, and you ask for their advice, what they say is, if you have evidence that there has been a breach, or you have a concern that there's evidence that there has been a breach, that the recommendation is to proceed with an investigation, otherwise, a member of the public could step forward, call for an investigation, and if there's been a breach found, regardless of who's on the board, every board member can be removed. And I, for the record, do not wanna be removed from this board, because there's been a breach of confidentiality on multiple occasions, that's severe. So I, I'm suggesting this because the attorney, or the district attorney has recommended, the NISBA has recommended this, so, and this is very serious. As a board, there is so much important decisions we make in executive session regarding to personnel, to contract, very significant for this district. And you can't move forward as a board in good faith and participate and make those decisions, knowing that confidentiality is consistently violated. So, I'm suggesting this because it's been the advice of, of those that know more.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Yeah, I just wanna say, I mean, I don't disagree with that, Chris, and the seriousness of it, I, I personally just wanna, I want a little more information from the attorney about what it will take, what it means, how it proceeds, that, you know, costs and stuff, before I move forward, so that, I just, I want more information before voting yes, that's just where I'm coming from.
So you were asking for it to be covered here?
It's, it's her turn to discuss. But I can't, um, yeah, I mean, I, I can't be here Monday, it's, that's not my, I, you know, it's nothing I can do.
We have other, we have other...
But I do would like other information, yeah, and I totally agree, I agree that there's been stuff out there, I mean, Sandy's absolutely right, there's been stuff that's in print, that's clearly violations. So there's definitely an issue, I agree, I agree. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, so, all those in favor of launching an investigation for a breach of confidentiality on the board for some not to exceed 10,000 dollars, raise your hand.
I'm fine with it. I'm also fine to take it back and get the, get with...
Yeah, actually, so what?
No, we're taking, we're taking, we need to take a vote.
Oh, I did, I got my hand.
Yeah, so all those in favor, all those opposed?
But I wanna say, I'm in agreement, after I put that motion out, I'm fine with, with getting more information, and then doing it.
I'm just following Robert's...
No, I appreciate that.
Uh, anything else?
I think it's a fair request.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second, five to nine.
I don't, I don't have anything for exec, if anybody, anybody can make a motion, but I don't have anything for exec. All right, motion.
I'd like to make a motion to go into exec to discuss personnel, please.
I'm gonna get a second on the motion on the floor, there's a motion on the floor to go into exec to discuss the personnel. Um, all those in favor of going into exec?
No, it's, it raises, right...
Any member can request a vote.
Yeah, she, yeah, she, yeah, we need it for. Okay, motion carries, we're in exec, thank you very much, everybody.